Suntre Board of Trustees, 4 august, 2025, à 6:30 PM. Să ajută-mi în punctul legat de legi.
Pontul legat de legi, 6/25, a Adevărului USA. Dacă două Republice vorbesc de legi, ună din știința, într-un știință, pentru că sunt de la Republica țăra de țară.
Bine, primul item pe agenda, aprobarea alegată.
Îmi facem o mociune că aprobăm agenda acum?
Îmi fac.
Am mociunea de clerk Gurrey, apoi de trezitor Sutherland, toți în favoare?
Așa.
Mociunea pasă. Privesc, privesc, item pe agenda este aprobarea alegării.
Am aprobat, am facem mociunea pentru a aprobă alegerea care este scrisă pentru ziua 6/25 și 6:30, 2025.
Eu sunt secundar.
Am mociunea de trustee Rosio, apoi de trustee Moreno, toți în favoare?
Așa.
Mociunea pasă. Bine, item public, anunțe. Dacă nu există, să mergem la publicament.
Bineînțeles. Da, 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 sorry about that. Good evening. Numele meu este Victoria Bryling și locuiu pe 30 Mile Road. Spunam apoi două mesi înainte despre propusul încărcării salariilor pentru oficialii electorici. Iar în timpul acelea, nu eram complet preparată să exprimăm minunările mele claramente. Deci vreau să reîntrăm în acest lucru rapid. În timpul acelea, sau sorry, sunt aici astăzi cu perspectiva mai informată. Nu numai despre propusul încărcării, dar despre minunările mai largi și transpareție, procesul și comunicare. Ce s-a înțeles pentru mine este că în fapt, în prea greu de preparat în mesi înainte, îmi apropia să reflectez un lucru mai mare, care este problema acestor board. Un patrât reocurent al propuselor pentru votare fără documentare sau explicare. Foarte mulți, se pare, ca itemul este aprobat cu o speranță că planul și implementarea vor fi urmărite mai târziu. Publicul speră și deserve să vadă răspunsul și groundworkul înainte a astea decizii. особa când capitalul crește și presupunerea este. Atunci, poate nu e clar în interior, dar dacă publicul îl vede ca eu, cu confusion, minunare și greu de acces la detalii de suport, atunci ceva e pierdut. Transpareția nu este doar pentru a avea lucrurile înființate în fața portă. În ceea ce privește propusurile salariilor, vreau să fiu clara, nu sunt împotriva compensației fair. Dacă lucrul a crescut sau dacă speranțele au schimbat, așa trebuie considerat. L-am spus de mister Reader că unul dintre localitățile folosite pentru comparare este localitatea Chesterfield. Cu tot respectul, acesta este comparare fundamentală. Chesterfield are o populație mult mai mare și o bază taxă mai largă, o infrastructură publică mai sofisticată. Am vizitat site-ul lor și am vizitat unii dintre materialele publice lor, inclusiv un presupunț de 246 page și un masterplan de 193 page. Nivele de organizare și documentare este considerabil mai departe de ce Lennox stă. Dar voi notea că un nou masterplan este în locul ei, cum am învățat de măsă Rosio. Comparând noi cu o localitate a acestei dimensiuni, nu susține argumentul acesta. El highlightează unul dintre disconnect. Deci asta mă întoarce, de nou, la aceste întrebări, care am un pic mai clar, sper să. Ce sunt speranțele legale sau interne pentru oficialii electorici, inclusiv atenție, disponibilitate și performanță de loc? Sunt aceste speranțe scrisi în rezoluzii sau policy? Și sunt ele aplicate? Dacă nu, ce standard sunt folosite pentru a evaluiza dacă încărcarea este justificată? Îmi apropia boarda să consideră studiu de compensare teribilă sau workload. Răspundând doar pe perspective interne sau frustrare publică, nu este calea pentru a fi o decizie objective așa. Un review neutral ar ajuta să înfruntăm gapul și să stabilească această confianță. Mulțumesc.
Bineînțeles, sunt Eugene Boyd. Sunt aici pentru a oferi unii motive importante de ce încărcarea salariilor pentru localitate este bineînțeles și necesară în timpul acestuia. Costul de vechime a crescut significant în ultimii ani din cauza inflației, subținerea prețurilor, aproape de orice parte, de combustibil, utilități, bani, servicii baza de servicii. Acesti realități impactă toată lumea, inclusiv cei în serviciu în public sau în ofițe. În timpul acestuia, localitatea a făcut muncă majoră în sensul modernizării, eficientă operativă și unul dintre cele mai transformative schimbări a fost implementată prin software BSNA, o sistemă desigurat specifically pentru regim local. Suește funcții critice, cum ar fi asesajarea proprietății, plătirea taxălor și gestiunea utilității, permitire și vizualizare financiară. Toate departamentele localității acum rețin BSNA în ziua dău și suntem bine la drumul nostru să le folosim în capacitatea lor totală. Acesta a încărat multa fluxul de lucru interne și a făcut recorduri vitali mai accesibile, organizate și sigurate. În adresa, ofițele noastre au lucrat durat pentru a merge în sensul unui sistem paperless. Stafăle în departamente, cum ar fi trezitorul, ofițerul de clerk și departamentul de băgărim, au investit timp și esențial în scanare și archiving de ani. Iar eu înseamnând ani, am văzut ei să carryă boxe și boxe și numai balele de blueprints din basă și să le urmeze prin scaners mari pentru a digitaliza acest întreg localitate. Incomplițion. Însume de documente, inclusiv recete, permitiri de băgărim, blueprints și recorduri financiare. Am făcut totul acesta continuu, zi după zi. Și am așteptat fiecare resident care a călcat părerea sau a ales telefonul. Acestea încercă mai mult decât să încercă conveniție, crează un sistem rezilient, eficient, ce își asigură că operațiile localității pot continua sigur, chiar dacă unul sau mai multe membri de team sunt dispari. Instituții financiare acum au acces online online de 24/7, accesul la conturi localității și alegere. Avem o apropiație așa de transpareție și responsabilitate pe întreaga board. Toate progresurile requierează timp, învățare și技能. Teamul de oameni încălcati să servește publicului, apoi să-l apoi. Adjustările de încărcare bine găsite reflectă nivelul responsabilității, profesionalism și încălcatiștele ce se asigură în aceste roluri de azi. Nu este doar despre compensație, este despre a continua să construiem o regim localită care este modern, eficient și capabil de a reprezenta demandaile prezentă.
Mulțumesc.
Numele meu este Grace Eisen, locuiesc pe Peshaw Road, în Lennox, localitatea. Sunt aici pentru a repeta exigența mea că explicați cum se încărcarea va fi încărcată de 40%. Cum trebuie să se intampla acest nivel de încărcare. Apreciez faptul că economia a schimbat. Nu știu dacă o persoană din această râmă a receput 40% de încărcare în un an. În adresa, când vorbim despre digitalizarea sistemului, excelent. Cineva care este digitalizat, merge într-o muncă de muncă, odată cu toate acestea în computer. Acesta nu va intra în 2026, așa ca în 24 și 25. De ce trebuie să se intampla 40% de încărcare pentru lucru este mai puțin explicabil. Mulțumesc.
Bineînțeles, numele meu este Chris Boyd, locuiesc pe 100 Mile Road. Îmi apropiam cu ceva din ceva a fost spus despre salariile. Știu că când lăsau-mi boarda, apoi multe ani înainte, am spus că în timpul acestuia boarda era încărcată. Cred că boarda a fost adusă la un cost de încărcare foarte bineînțeles. Trezitorul și clerkul, cu nicio ofertă, în general, cred că nu am fost în această positiune, nu am fost chiar și un an, iar să-i cereți 40% de încărcare este un pic mult. Îmi apropiam costul de vechime și dacă încărcarea a crescut, absolut, încărcarea ar trebui să fie aici. Îmi apropiam cu asta ce ar fi spus, dar 40%, cred că era 42%. I-am vorbit cu mister Reader, am avut o conversa foarte bună despre acesta înainte. Apașoară, nu sunt mai preparat, pentru că am fost just așa așa despre acesta. Iar el a spus că recomandarea, cred că era totul la 20%-42%, poate ar fi către un număr mai jos. Iar cum am spus cu mister Reader, dacă este justificabil, asta e tot ce mă interesează. Dacă încărcarea este justificabilă, sunt de acord. Mulțumesc.
Bineînțeles, Dennis Haig, 3940, county line. Încărcarea federală propusă acest an pentru toți fetele federați este 3.9%. Mulți dintre constituintări din această comunitate sunt în social security. majoritatea lor vor avea aproximativ un încărcare de 2.2% de încărcare. Deci, vedându-le ca bază, a fost destul de greu din aici cu inflația și tot. Hey, eu am găsit, suntem toți bucuri de arma și încălcatiște de vieții noștri. Dar 40%, nu este în regulă, este la nivel federal, dar la nivelul social security, nu văd.
Linda Rosio, 25589, 26 Mile Road. Mr. Boyd a spus înainte despre cum multă lumea a lucrat și nu mă dubl. Am fost întrebată în unul dintre ultimii mesi aici, de ce mai întoarcă despre o săptămână de lucru de 5 zile? Când măsă Bryling a spus, în perioada sa, cu localitatea Chesterfield, era de 5 zile. Știu că nu toată lumea este în salar, dar cele mai mari, cei mai salarți sunt. Iar deci, nu ar fi costat la localitatea nicăieri dacă oamenii salarii vor veni în urmă în urmă în urmă să ajute să facă ceva de acesta, sau acesta, de a운țare sau ceva ce trebuie să faci pentru a digitaliza. În adresa, cred că residentele aici ar trebui să știe câți încărcări au fost găsite în ultimii ani. Au existat încărcări pentru ofițerii supraviseri, luni, anul înainte sau anul înainte? Este aceasta singura încărcare care ai obtinut după ce ai fost în ofițe, sau cu bani? Cred că residentele aici ar trebui să știe percentența de care ai obtinut după ce ai fost elect de fiecare an, dacă a existat. Ce altceva? Cred că asta e tot pentru acum, mulțumesc.
Numele meu este Bob Wigan, 67550, Low Plate Road. În adresa, sunt proprietarul de golf Richmond Golf Course cu fratele mei. Există doar un lucru pe care îmi asigur, care se întâmplă în fiecare an. Nu este costul de vechime, este mine taxă. Femeile golfului proprietari, în 20 mile, sunt pagat 1/3 din ce îmi paguiesc. Când îmi pagau, și au asesat proprietariile mele 20 ani înainte, era aproape de 8 milione. Nu pot să-i vinde azi pentru 2. Așa că am trebuit să iei acest localitate în acțiune, să mă îndepărtez taxele și să dau 30.000 de la jurist, să mă îndepărteze taxele. 唯一的 thing I can guarantee este că voi face costul de vechime. Nu am avut încărcare de 20 ani, în mine sunt afacere, eu fac lucru. Cred că localitatea așteptă multă bani și facă multe lucruri în fața portălor, care nu ne place. Îmi apropiam de nou ce s-a întâmplat, containerul de transport, vreau să întoarcă la afacerea vieții noastre. Vreau să îmi întoarcă asta. Cred că tot ce putem să parcăm în garajul nostru, în care mama și copiii de la noi dorme, ar trebui să fie permis într-un container de transport care este 200 feet în fața bogării. E mai bine. Nu ne trebuie biciile electric�, nu ne trebuie liniile de război, nu ne trebuie războiul în mașinile noastre, în gatul gasului, în produsele ortoprote, în fertilizatorul, situându-ne în garajul nostru, când putem să-l punem într-un container de transport, care e mai bine. Mulțumesc.
Numele meu este Don Creed, locuiesc pe Bates Road, de 29-30. Iar dacă localitatea are așa multe bani pentru a-i da, nu înțeleg de ce o pontă care este pe 30 Mile Road, probabil mai devreme decât mulți dintre voi, a fost văd, nu e mai așa. Acum ai o pontă pe 28 Mile Road. E doar, și eu nu înțeleg de ce nu pot fi făcute. Dacă avem toate acestea bani extra. Dacă avem bani extra, putem să parcăm un parc de parcă de laici sau ceva. Mulțumesc.
Bine, publicament final. Bine, mergem la itemul 7, alegării. Toate itemile scrisi din acesta sunt alegate la agenda, considerate rutine, boarda va fi alegată cu motiv. În conformitate cu规矩, nu există discuții separate a acestor itemi, de la membrii boardei ale republice, atât de mai multe, atât de mai multe, în mesi. În care, într-unul dintre trezitorii, se poate renunța la acestea din agenda, pentru a discută și considera, în legatura cu itemul 8 din agenda. Aprobarea alegării va fi făcută cu majoritate, de la majoritate, de la cei prezent și de la cei care sunt.
În luni și juli, legele au fost combinate și numărul total de lege este 1.367.917.20.
Dacă nu există discuții, mociunea va fi alegată.
Îmi fac o mociune că aprobăm ordenele și legele în numărul 1.367.917.20.
Eu apoi, am mociunea de clerk Gurrey, apoi de trezitor, mă rog să îi numi.
Gurrey?
Așa.
Reader?
Așa.
Moreno?
Așa.
Rosio?
Așa.
Sutherland?
Așa.
Bine, mergem la numărul 9, business unfinished, item A, 2025-2026, presupunț de încărcare de fete, mister Grayville?
Bineînțeles, board. Bineînțeles, board. Astăzi, primul item pe care îmi prezint, este presupunțul de încărcare de fete pentru 2025. Acesta este un presupunț care a fost prezentat și a fost adus la agenda apoi un mână înainte, în timpul trangelor presupunțele. Astăzi veți vedea înainte, costul de vechime, ajustarea și încărcarea adică. fiecare fete, fiecare departament, intern și fete seasonale sunt aducute în această ajustare. Cred că cu vizualizarea localității și vizualizarea boardei, acesta este un încărcare ajustată, încărcare, excuse me, pentru lucru bineînțeles făcut, cu unii dintre itemi care au fost ajustați pentru protecția staffului calificat. Cu asta, îmi întoarc pe boardul pentru întrebări sau comentari. Pot să vă duc în mod clar fiecare item, daca vă doriți. Dar au fost prezentati și au fost trimis prin email și au fost prezentati în lumea pasă. Pentru vizualizare. Iar eu apașoară, propusul din acesta a fost să aibă un ajustare de costul de vechime de 2.5%, care este COLA, bazat pe informația social security a regimului federal, cu un cent adică pentru toți fetele noștri. Pentru cei care ar putea avea întrebări sau minunări, atunci când vedem comunitățile care fac acelasi tip de lucru, ainda suntem mai jos în acesti salarii și în câmpurile care concernă zona de alungă. Atunci când am făcut lucru perspectiv, în vizualizare, în acestea.
Dacă nu există discuții, mociunea va fi alegată.
Vreau să fac o mociune. Vreau să fac unii schimbări la acest presupunț de încărcare. Iar baza de fete este adusă la fete. Carol Swantec a făcut lucruul său foarte bine de la depută clerkă. Acesta a fost provințat de faptul că a luat această positiune, chiar dacă au existat 3 clerkări diferite. Vreau să propun un încărcare de 2 de adăugă, în adăugă, în încărcarea adică. Mark Grayville a fost permis de supervisorul să plece la 12:00, majoritatea zilei, majoritatea săptămâni, și să lucheze de la casa. Dacă această practică este protejată, nu cred că acesta este un exemplu bun de un loc harmonios. Vreau să propun un INCRESE de COLA doar de la Grayville. Acesta nu va schimba numărul maxim, sau numărul total, care va fi spent.
Să mă rog să mă rog cu mociunea?
Eu sunt secundarul cu mociunea.
Există mociunea de trustee Moreno, apoi de trustee Rosio, mă rog să îi numi.
Moreno?
Așa.
Rosio?
Așa.
Gurrey?
Ne.
Reader?
Ne.
Sutherland?
Ne.
Mociunea eșo. Vă spun asta acum, e permis să plece la 12:00 să își facă grijă de mama lui 96 ani. Însă, să-l neghezi pentru ca să se intampla, ar fi încomplect. Deci, eu fac mociunea pentru a aprobă alegerea propusă, 2025, presupunțul de încărcare de fete ca prezentat. Văd să clarificăm ceva pentru cei care vrea să întrebi întrebări. Eu lucru eu continuu în timpul zilei. Sunt totdeauna disponibil, 24/7, pe telefon. Dacă vă controllați sistemele electronice mele, emailul meu sunt consistent, înflorind în fața mea și sunt aici în acest băgărim în viata, controlând variile. Când sunt supervisor, pentru unul dintre cele mai mari comunități din county McComb, voi vă spune claramente că beneficile pe care ai obținut, protecția și informația și bază de înțelegere sunt încomplexe de comparare cu salariile. Apreciez faptul că fiind în positiunea de supraviser, și fiind puternic, dar nu există un fete din această comunitate care nu poate să mă contacte, chiar și prin email sau telefon, în orice timp. În orice directive, dată de la oficialii electorici, este consistent și reținut imediat, atunci când eu lucru cu fiecare și fiecare dintre ei, întotdeauna. Mulțumesc pentru timpul meu privat.
Există mociunea de trezitor, are o secundă suficientă?
Eu sunt secundar.
Am mociunea de trezitor, secundar de trezitor Sutherland, mă rog să îi numi.
Reader?
Așa.
Sutherland?
Așa.
Rosio?
Ne.
Gurrey?
Așa.
Moreno?
Ne.
Bine, mergem la itemul 2025-2026, presupunțul de încărcare de fete, mister Grayville?
Bine, bineînțeles. Acesta a fost un lucru de context, care a fost vorbit de mulți azi. Vreau să vă arăt claramente, contrar de informația care a fost erod, ar putea fi dăcută. Același numit 40% de încărcare din mesi înainte nu este valoasă. Deschiderea HR-ului, pe care l-am lucrat, încălcată, pe care localitatea nu a avut de a lungi, împreună cu mine, am lucrat împreună, ferisit, în ultimul mână și înhal, încălcată un document colectiv de informații. Vă spun că documentul, pentru a-și mancare rigide în comunitate, a fost mancat în county McComb. Nu am comparat salariile în county St. Clair, pentru că nu are comparare directă. Vă spun că jurisdicția de încărcare pe care o vizualizam a fost localitatea Richmond, localitatea Bruce, localitatea Armada, localitatea Lennox, localitatea Harrison, localitatea Chesterfield și localitatea McComb. Grântit, populatii rangează de 3.500 de oameni în localitatea Richmond, de 91.000 de oameni în county McComb. Payul de supervisor, clerk și trezitor rangează de 29-39 de oameni în popularea în county Richmond, totul la 3.88 de oameni în popularea, din county McComb, așa că pe populatie. Astăzi, cu asta fiind spus, acesta este pentru membrii boardei Lennox, despre încărcarea și considerare pentru mesiul 4 august, 2025. Salarii care ar ajuta comunitatea electorică să aibă o numără bineînțelesă, în ultima decenă, salarii nu au fost adusă la un standard bineînțeles pentru sustenabilitatea oficialilor electorici. Retinerea de calitate și înțelegere electorice și staff de apoi este un element important pentru creșterea și sustenabilitatea comunității. Lennox, în fapt, are proiecte de creștere sustenabilă în urmării câteva ani, împreună cu creșterea infrastructurii și itemii de apoi, împreună cu protecția efectivă și plan. Acesti număruri au fost aducute din toate comunitățile, și le-am descris în documentele care au fost aduse și duse boardului în inceputul zilei în urmă. Acesta arăta informația pentru fiecare ofițe și stafful de apoi. Pentru a ajuta boarda și trusteei electorici electorici să aibă o încărcare bineînțelesă, respectabilă și retinibilă, recomandările și optii sunt prezentate. Astăzi, dataa adusă este a conditiei comunităților alal, cum am spus și comentat. Recomandarea, în acest moment, pentru a ajuta oficialii electorici să aibă o încărcare care ar fi 20%. which would be a 20% move in order to sustain the elected official's sustainability, which equates out to 71, 742. This is less than the original request that was being recommended based on sustainability and balancing over the last decade. Please see all attached documents and the supporting items that we have collected. We have worked with the staff in particular, Mary Medusen from our clerk's department that handles the staff and HR items for the local support. I will tell you, this young lady went out, reached out to every community, we were able to receive those items directly back from every community with all the breakouts. All of those items were compiled, put together, and presented to the entire board for any questions or comments. With this email being dated July 7/28 at 8:03 PM, it was informed, any questions, to please reach back to the writer for clarifications. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or clarifications on the information.
Yes, Mr. Graybaugh, it was an excellent synopsis of what has gone on. And it would have been great to have this at a budget hearing that we had several months, but none of this was discussed at any budget hearing whatsoever. Given all the information that I received, I would like to go through a couple of items. Richmond Township, which quite frankly works three days a week, total of 24 hours per work week, which continues or which adds up to about 1,248 hours per year. At an average, at their salaries of $30,187, they have, they break down to about $24 per hour. Bruce Township works Monday, Monday through Wednesday, 7:30 to 4:30, and Thursday, 8:30 to 4:30. Its work week is 31 hours. Totals up to 1,612 hours per year. Their salary is at $65,990. Works out to $40.94 per hour. Armita Township works Monday through Thursday, 9 to 4. Total of 28-hour work week. Works out to 1,456 hours per year. Their base salary of 3,000, which is their clerk's salary, which is the highest. Their clerk's salary is $37,112.18. Works out to $25.49 per hour. Lennox Township has a total of a 32-hour work week. Its hours is 1,664 hours per year. At base salary that they were getting before this, before any raises, it works out to, their base salary of $59,785 works out to $35.93 per hour. Their proposed lowest amount of $71,742 works out to $43.11 per hour. Mind you, these are partial employees, part-time employees. They're not full-time because the letter that was received was very, very misleading from Mr. Graybaugh. Harrison Township works Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30. It's a 40-hour work week. Their hours work out to 2,080 hours. Their base salary of $95,000 works out to $45.67 per hour. Chesterfield Township works Monday through Friday, again a 40-hour work week. 2,080 hours per year. Their base salary of $92,209 works out to $44.33 per hour. And McComb Township's pretty much the same thing, and theirs works out to $52.40 per hour. Okay? I would say if our, if we have full-time officials here, which I really liked the suggestion of having the officials come in to work that Friday and take care of whatever our residents have to do. It sounds like a good plan. I don't see where comparisons to other townships without comparing the hours that they worked for that time is a fair comparison. Thank you.
As a reminder, I will remind you that under MTA rules, you have an elected position full-time clerk, elected position full-time treasurer, elected full-time position supervisor, and then elected trustees that are part-time. This is the same in every single community. I will also remind you that in numerous communities, you have elected officials that are working much less hours based upon some of their schedules, the way that's set. The state of Michigan actually has 30 hours as a full-time wage scale. So just as a reminder, the state of Michigan has actually changed their rules to 30 hours of full-time. I respectfully allow you to understand your information. I do sustain some of the numbers that the numbers that you looked at, that you received, were actually numbers that we went out and pulled. We did not hide anything. We added all the numbers to the attachments to the list. So when you look at those numbers, please keep in mind that that was the operational side, that we went and pulled all those items. Would it be nice to go ahead and have a third party do a contracted review? Sure. That will change your demographics and your wages across the board. If you turn this building into a five-day operation along with staff, you're going to increase your operations staff about 180,000 a year along with the increased operational costs to the building and the rest of the facilities.
And how exactly did you prove this out?
Excuse me?
Right now, currently, there works. How did you prove it out?
Prove what out, sir?
How, how did you prove out what you just said?
Which piece of it are you asking about? The operational cost? The wage cost?
Operational cost? All of it, yes.
Okay, operational cost, you're going to have to adjust from four to five days. You're turning the heat on, you're changing the light operations. You change all the operations of the building.
I see no documentation here about that.
That's what I'm telling you from, that wasn't asked for. We did not put that together. We looked at this and we understand what that would cost.
So this is your speculation?
No difference than yours, but I have numbers based on the budget, sir.
Mine are hard numbers here.
Mine are also hard numbers from the operations of the bills. Let me beg. With that, I'll respectfully bring it back to the board. There is no further discussion, a motion will be in order.
I like the idea of a third-party entity in this. So I would like to table the officials' wage increases until we discuss possibly a third party.
Is there a sufficient second? Here, none of the motion does. Motion would be in order.
Then I would like to make a motion that there are no changes whatsoever to any of the elected officials as far as pay.
Is there a sufficient second? Here, none of the motion does. Motion would be in order.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-3A based on the presentation from the deputy supervisor and the data that was collected.
Is there a sufficient second?
I'll second. I'll second.
I have a motion by treasurer Sutherland, seconded by clerk Curly. May the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Sutherland?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Rosio?
Nay.
Reader?
Aye.
Marino?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Moving down to item C, policy amendment. Mr. Marino?
I'll second, I'll switch down.
All right, this is the next item on the agenda. This is the board meeting administration policy. This evening, it is being requested for an adoption of posting the meetings with the operational policy to follow. As you all have in your board packet, you will see those items, the meeting rules, and order of public participation. All meetings of the township board, as well as those of the boards, committees, and commissions, shall be conducted in accordance with the most recent edition of Robert's Rules of Order, except where such rules conflict with this policy. Township ordinances or ethical, state or federal, shall follow. The chair of the meeting shall have the authority to interrupt and enforce Robert's rules in order to maintain decorum, ensure procedural compliance, and promote efficient meeting management. Any questions, I'd be more than happy to bring it back to the board.
Yes, Mr. Addis. This Rule of Order seems to sound like it's dangerously close to violating First Amendment rights. The chair of any meeting should be allowed to interrupt anybody. Robert's Rule of Order is a booklet that is rarely used by any meetings at all nowadays. Even though there are times that everybody, when there is a conflict, goes right back to Robert's Rules of Order, but they don't follow it regularly. So I would like an attorney's opinion on this proposal.
My attorneys love to give opinions, but I only give them right into the full board. They don't come off the top of my head in the middle of a meeting. And that's always been, and I don't understand that. But I have no problem providing an opinion of it.
Okay, then I would like to table this so that Mr. Addis can research it.
Is there a sufficient second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Marino, supported by trustee Rosio. May the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Marino?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Nay.
Sutherland?
Nay.
Curly?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving down to number 10, new business, 2025-2026 township renewal. Second insurance renewal proposal. Mr. Graybaugh? Good evening, board. This evening, we have a renewal proposal from our insurance carrier that has been approved to process this through. We're pleased to present the renewed proposal for coverages underwriting through Triton Public Risk Solutions, a member of the Paragon Insurance Holdings. The afforded carriers such as Ascot for liability automobile coverages have been awarded the A's best ratings of AAAX, stable rating of A+. Excuse me. Triton writes over 150 million premiums on an annual basis throughout eastern, southern, and midwestern states. We do have Mr. Stephen Saab here this evening in case there's any questions. The annual renewal for our premium for this year for the township has, everything has went up throughout the communities and throughout the states, throughout the government, doesn't matter where it is. The annual renewal premium is $145,779, which also includes terrorism coverage. The premium can be reduced by 1998 if the township decides to refuse terrorism coverage. Although we do not recommend rejecting the terrorism coverage as the original federal act has been amended to include both foreign and domestic acts. Those can also be included in computer programs, just so that you're aware of that. The expired annual premium was $131,615. The premium has increased 14,164 or 10.76%. This year, the insured values have increased from 15,000, or excuse me, 15,133,200 to 15,738,528. Increase of 6,500 or 4%. Contracts equipment, emergency equipment have increased from 1.3 million to 1.6 million. An increase of 320,000 or an increase of 24.30%. Currently, there are two open claims that the township is incurring with a reserve amount of 143,000, with one reserve being 89,000, who may close for a lesser amount. As you all are well aware, one of those claims currently is also the building that was damaged in the DTE construction or a DTE brownout that we received. So that is an additional claim that we're going to be litigating at somewhere in the neighborhood of 130-plus thousand. With that, there is a recommendation to go forward and remove, or excuse me, recommendation to go forward and approve the renewal through nickel and saff for property and casualty renewal proposal. Any questions, comments? I'll open it up, both myself and the agent this year.
Yes, I'd like to know what the policy period covers starting date to ending date.
Supposed to be August 1st to the end of one year.
Okay.
And I, let me correct that, Mr. Saab, I believe it's actually July because of the non-renewal time in, or the non-forward meeting in July. It's actually July 1st, July 1st.
July 1st. And this is the first that we are seeing this in July?
No, this was proposed and sent to us, but was not able to go on. There was no July meeting. We did not receive these until the end of, or the middle of July because there is no meeting in July.
Okay, on the bill run, it appears this was paid for. Okay, on the bill run, it appears this was paid for already on July 16th, 2025. Check number 17463 in the amount 145,779. I was from the understanding that, um, bills over $5,000 need board approval. Is that not correct?
This is insurance that is required to be paid. The board has to do a final approval. If you did not make this payment, you would have lost insurance on the township completely.
I totally understand that. That's why leadership would have had this on the meeting in May so that it was time to look at it, compare it. 145,000 dollar bill and we've got one, not two or three votes.
Now, Mr. Saft goes out and does all the work to review and bring back the items brought together. The board, three years ago, or two years ago, gave that approval to Nicklin Saft for a three-year contract to go out and be the agent and bring those items back to the board each year.
So you're telling me that three years hasn't expired yet?
No, they have not.
They have not?
They have not.
How come it doesn't say that on his proposal?
It was in a board communication in 2023, I believe.
Okay. And there's a 14,164 dollar increase that I would think somebody has to approve. Did the supervisor's office approve it or?
No, that's the change, and I'm sure Mr. Saft can clarify that. But that's a change that if you listen to what I've said, that is a change in the valuation of the amount that went up. The premium itself increased 14,000. That's the cost of all the items that we've added, the new equipment, the buildings, the changes. Those items have increased the cost of replacement to 145,000 for the insurance itself.
Who approved the 14,000 dollar increase?
That is what is in front of you guys this evening.
Well, how can we approve something that's already been paid for?
This is the annual renewal for the insurance. I understand that.
But shouldn't the annual renewal come before the due date?
I would love to have an annual renew before the due date.
I'm sorry?
I would love to have an annual renewal before the due date. But I know in business, we get them last minute because the insurance carriers don't give them to the agents. All I can do is present the information that's presented to us and give it to the board. I don't make these decisions.
Well, I think the supervisor's office should request an adequate time so that the board has the information from not one bidder, from two to three bidders. That's only good business.
And, Mr. Saft, if I'm correct, they send these out to numerous companies. They collect it, they bring it back. And they get what type of terrorism insurance, what type of collective insurance is brought forward to it.
So how can we warn us in it?
That is the job of the agent, to bring it back collectively so that it's presented. So I'll have Mr. Saft go ahead and answer those questions for you.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve Saft Jr. with Nicklin Saft Insurance. Uh, as Mr. Grebo made reference, we've operated under the assumption that we've had an approval by the board for a period of three years. This is an annual renewal. Um, I was not required to appear last year. Uh, Mr. Grebo invited me this year, hence my attendance. Um, we're independent agents. Uh, we competed against, uh, a variety of carriers two years ago when we were awarded this as a renewal. Uh, we've been the agent in the past. Uh, this is a program that we, uh, sell and represent throughout the Coleman-Sanclair counties. Uh, this program is tailored to municipalities. Um, we, uh, do talk to other carriers. We did show this information to the traveler's insurance companies and to the Gladfelter Insurance Program again this year. Uh, carriers that we did formal quotes with, uh, two years ago that were substantially higher either premium, uh, did not have comparable coverages, uh, and also had higher deductibles than what we're presenting here. I'm happy to go through the proposal to discuss those coverages. Uh, but again, uh, I, it's my impression and understanding that the board will be looking for, uh, public proposals and public RFP again next year for the upcoming three-year, five-year term, or whatever, uh, period of time you're seeking.
Um, the Braden Group that you're touting, um, is that the same insurance company that we had last year?
Yes, there's been no change to that, yes. They are a-
Is it the same that we had the year before?
Yes.
What about the year before that?
Braden's been involved with our agency as the national, um, the state, uh, brokerage house since as long as I've done business with them. My first account with them was with the road commission thirty years ago, when it was still a commission. And we've always, Braden's been there.
I, I, I understand that. I just want to know if this is the same insurance company?
It is.
You know, we've been using right along?
It is.
Okay. Um-
As you've been using our office right along as the primary agent, the responding agent.
Yeah, but the agent doesn't have to pay any claim or anything like that. It's the insurance company that we're more concerned with.
Correct.
And the claim's never paid.
So can you confirm when the policy starts from then?
It is July. It's an annual policy, July to July, July 1, July 1.
Shouldn't it state on the policy that this is year two of a three-year policy, or year three of a three-year policy?
That's nothing that's under my control or direction. Um, we issue a policy that has the dates. Uh, we serve at the pleasure of the board. Uh, I, I, if it's a request, I can certainly restate what the board has conveyed to us. But that's, uh, not a, uh, consideration that I would ever, or I'd normally include with any proposal that I do. I provide a document for the annual term.
Boards change, and several of us are new to the board, so what happened two years ago, we don't necessarily are aware of.
Well, I, I, I think what you're, what you're asking for, what you're seeking, has to be communicated for the next renewal so we're prepared to answer those questions.
I understand the effective dates are, um, 7/1 to 7/1.
Correct.
Is it possible to get these quote, or this quote in so that we can make a decision prior to having to pay the bill?
Oh, absolutely.
Is it something that we can get in May?
Yes, without a doubt, yeah.
Is there any reason why we didn't get it in May?
Again, we were operating, repeating myself, we were operating with the assumption that there was a three-year commitment by this body for the renewal of the coverages. So it was not conveyed to us that there was any need for, um, any special instructions. But certainly, again, if we're provided with that request, we're, we're happy to comply.
The paperwork we have in front of us is July 10th, so apparently 2025. So apparently it was expired when this was written.
No, it was not. Uh, it was renewed, and we provided all certificates and binders in, in advance of the expiration date.
But apparently we didn't have those on July 1st.
Yes, you did. You had, we didn't have this letter on July 1st, but you had the documentation.
So you sent the documentation-
July 1st, sir, is, July 1st is the, which I'm sure you're, you're familiar, is the, um, year-end, very common municipalities. So 8% of our business occurs on July 1st. Uh, so we're pushing out, uh, Clinton Township, Washington Township, uh, Richmond Township, Bruce, uh, Ray Township, Riley Township. And a number of communities are all coming on that same date. Pretty hairy. But again, if, if we were operating the assumption that this was a, a, uh, non-event, as it was last year, uh, you made it clear that there's been a change in the board, we'll happy to comply. Again, but we have to be notified of what your requests are in advance.
On page three here, it says landfills. The following premises or operations are excluded from the coverage. And on page three, it says landfills in the box that's checked.
Correct.
We have one of the largest landfills in Lennox Township in the state of Michigan.
I would disagree, you don't. A private entity does. We understand that the exposure exists, but it is not owned or controlled by this community.
And what's the amount of the township's umbrella over all items?
If you look on page 17, the proposal, you have a $4 million umbrella that's excess the underlying policies. The underlying policies of the general liability, the automobile liability, the public officials, and the employment-related practices, which each have a million dollars. So we set this 4 million on top of that to give you a total of five. And as an enhancement, this coverage, which is unique in the marketplace, the carrier treats that umbrella with the limits and silos or towers. So if you think of, say, a catastrophic claim in the fire department, which would come under general liability that would go for $3 million, the limits dedicated to the other three lines of coverage, the automobile, the, um, public officials and employment practices are not attached or not reduced. So it's dedicated to the line of coverage.
Do you think that's an adequate number for Lennox Township?
Without the exposure for law enforcement, without the exposure for sewage treatment and transmission lines, yes. When we start looking at law enforcement, we start looking at the treatment of sewer, we're looking at limits of $10 million.
How is our sewer lines and Lennox insured?
They're, they're, they're covered here, but as far as the, we're, we're including that coverage. But as far as the, the, the treatment, excuse me, you're not, you're not doing sewage treatment.
Correct, yeah. But we do have sewer lines for it.
Yes, yeah, yes. And as I recall, they're not combined, they're strictly storm, or are they strictly sanitary? There's one or the other sanitary.
Sanitary.
Yeah, so you don't have storm drains, which cause all kinds of joy for people with pixies. Which we cover.
There's no further discussion, the motion will be in order.
Just one last thing as a reminder. The former board had made a recommendation and an approval. This is being brought forward for clarification.
That could be true. And I don't say it's not, but I don't know how it can be without a dollar amount for each year. The land, trash, people haulers, they'll have a three- and five-year contract, but that contract is dated, increased for each year.
They were given a contract to bring the renewals to us and renew the policies for coverage.
You're not going to find an insurance company that's going to commit to a premium beyond a one-year term.
I understand that. That's why I don't understand why we have a three-year contract without knowing what the cost is going to be.
That, that, that's a decision to get by the board, but it's not uncommon to see three- or five-year arrangements as far as developing relationships like I have that all the time. I see that all the time.
If there's no further discussion, the motion will be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the township insurance renewal as presented by Stephen Saft Jr.
I'll support that. I have a motion by Treasurer Sutherland, supported by the chair. May Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Nay.
Gurley?
Aye.
Marino?
Nay.
All right, moving down to item B, municipal and community credit contract renewal proposal. Mr. White?
Mr. Supervisor, honorable members of the board, uh, tonight I come before you with a, uh, contract for municipal and community credit use, um, for the small buses that we operate here in the community, primarily for the purpose of getting seniors and disabled folks to various, um, various medical care, uh, for getting, uh, people to work who might not otherwise be able to drive, and for some other community-related transportation. These are funds that our taxpayers pay to Smart, uh, in the form of a millage, uh, that is voted on for a five-year period. It's one mill over five years, less the heavily rolled back, which means that it's about 0.9 mills. And they're paid to Smart Bus, which is the big bus company that you see with the big, with the big vehicles operating up and down far from south of our community. Uh, Smart provides us a small portion of that millage back, uh, for us to be able to use for this purpose. It can only be used for this purpose, so really it becomes kind of a pass-through, if you will. Uh, they're, they can't be used for roads, it can't be used for parks, it can't be used for, uh, the EMS that I operate. It can only be used for these, these public transportation kind of needs. So the amount that comes back to Lennox Township in what they call credits, but credits are really dollars, if you will, uh, for, for the sake of the public and all voters, uh, is, is a total of $22,298. They, they come in what they call the form of municipal credits and community credits, which are just terms they use as Smart to describe these dollars. Uh, those aren't our words, they're theirs. Uh, with that, last year, uh, we provided, uh, uh, for the community of Lennox alone, 1,498 rides. Um, that, I think equates to about $15 per ride. If you get the idea of kind of diesel fuel and tires, uh, that's not a bad price to get people to, uh, back and forth to a dialysis appointment. Um, so with that, we simply ask that the board approve the municipal and community credit agreement with Smart to provide that funding, uh, for this transportation.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the 2026 municipal credit in the amount of $5,634, and a community credit in the amount of $16,664 to Richmond Lennox EMS for suburban mobile authority of, for regional transportation, otherwise known as Smart, as recommended by Jeff White.
Second motion. I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by trustee Rosio. May Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
All right, moving down to item C, fire department ventilation fan proposal. Mr. White?
Yes, so, uh, the fire department, uh, just required replacement of a, uh, a ventilation fan used for fire scene operations. We budgeted for this piece of equipment, uh, and it would, that budget was approved by the township board. Uh, we budgeted $5,500 for the specific piece of equipment, uh, through McQueen, um, their fire equipment supplier. We are able to secure a price for that piece of equipment of $4,350, or $1,150 less than the budgeted, uh, amount for that device. We're asking the township to approve the purchase of this battery-operated positive pressure fan, uh, which the fancy way to say is what blows the smoke out of your house if there's a fire, uh, if you will. Uh, for in the amount of $4,350.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, McQueen purchase of the fan for $4,050.
$4,350, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
$4,350.
$4,350, I'm sorry, yes.
I second that.
I have a motion by trustee Marino, seconded by treasurer Sutherland. May Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Marino?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
All right, moving down to item D, Fire Department computer replacement proposal. Mr. White?
Yes, so we have High Tech in earlier this year. They did their regular kind of evaluation of our computer equipment with the Township. Basically, the Township has kind of placed us, the Fire Department, on a plan to replace computers about every three years within the fire service. In talking to the folks from High Tech, the representatives that were there, the technicians, they said basically our computers are reaching kind of end of life at this point, which means they can't do the updates on that are necessary to keep our programs running. And so in accordance with the past Township practice and the recommendation from the technicians from High Tech, we are recommending the replacement of three HP computers and the installation, the equipment is on here as far as the security information, firewalls and so on for these devices to make them safe. And the total cost of that is three thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars for those three devices. These are all desktop computers and these are not the portals or the laptops that, you know, that we might use.
I was just going to ask that very question because I've been looking at the same computer and laptop, and I can't find it for under twelve hundred.
Right, yeah, these are, these are, these particular units that are, again, recommended by our computer, our IT vendor, are all devices that are desktop devices in accordance with the spin.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase. This is coming from High Tech?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase from High Tech in the amount of three thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Marino, second by Clerk Gurley. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Marino?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you all.
All right, moving down to item E, 2025 Township Computer Replacement Proposal. Mr. Gravon?
Good evening, Board. As Mr. White recommended and suggested through the Fire Department, we also have the same plan within Town Hall. Normally, that is positioned up through into the Clerk's office. And this evening, High Tech is also recommending to move forward with the annual replacement. And we have a program in place that we replace computers every year, so we don't take a massive amount in one spot. This year, we are requesting the approval to purchase six desktop computers with the necessary fittings for the Township staff from High Tech for the total cost of five thousand three hundred and ninety dollars to continue the recommended computer rotation as requested.
The six new computers, what percent is that of the, all the computers that we have? Is that eight?
Clerk, I believe that's...
How many computers do we have?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
I believe twenty-seven.
There's actually, I think there's only three or four more that are getting outdated. So after these six, there should only be four more.
You also have to remember when I'm calculating those numbers, those are also numbers that the Clerk's office has for the elections and so on and so forth, including the laptops.
I understand.
Okay.
You know, I just wanted to know approximately how many are we're replacing, because we're replacing over fifty percent of them.
No.
But it sounds like we're only replacing less than a quarter of them.
Yeah, we only do six, six every year, so that's not...
That's correct. We do six.
I don't know why there's such a big backup. Every year, there's been six since I've been on the board. Every year, High Tech recommends six that are getting ready to be outdated, where it will not take the Windows program that we run. And these are the ones that will be up very, very shortly.
I'll make a motion that we accept the High Tech offer, or bid for the computers for a total of five thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, support, sorry, I have a motion by Trustee Marino, supported by Clerk Gurley. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Marino?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
All right, item F, Emergency HVAC Repair. I believe this is both Mr. Gravon and Mr. Trombley?
That is correct. This evening, I have brought forth the information and we emailed out emergency information to the board concerning the HVAC system repairs. We originally had requested an emergency amount of fifty thousand dollars from this board at the last board meeting. During that timeframe, we found out that that was not accurate. We had an additional cost involved that the computer program needed to be replaced because of the new pump system would not allow the old system to control it. In addition to that, it was also part of the computer-based operation for the server we had to replace. These pumps were a lot more than expected, and they were close to eighty thousand just by themselves. The pumps on the emergency repair were requesting codification that was sent out, that we did receive approval back from three of the board members to move forward. Once again, I will restate the issues that we are running a ten-cylinder engine on six cylinders, and if we continue to run this, we will burn them out. And that is why the board made the decision they did in order to move this forward. Mr. Trombley has been in constant contact with our repair facilities, Johnson Control. Also, along with the computer program, I've been in contact with the insurance company. We have processed through this. The insurance company has had problems. Mr. Trombley has tried numerous times to work with them through a phone system in order for them to see the broken pulse, which is not possible. We have a basement. We cannot get out of the concrete and the steel. So they have been working through this program in order to get this taken care of. In addition to these pumps being damaged, we had the doors, along with the concession building electrical. At this point in time, the concession building electrical has been replaced and operational. The doors just got finished today for the ADA compliance seat for repairs. The insurance company has been very moderate and very informative. Matter of fact, we worked with them, both of us, on Friday, talking to both of them. So of course, we're working throughout, trying to make sure that we get these items up and operational. So that you're aware, when you guys approve this, this allowed Mr. Trombley to go ahead and place the orders. We since, from the time you guys approved this, we have since been able to install the controller for the computer systems. The program has been notified and ordered through Johnson Control. That should be here shortly. The actual server unit has already been installed through High Tech. The bad part is, the pumps are anywhere from nine to twelve weeks. We will not see this equipment until end of September, beginning of October. So with that being said, I'm just bringing this forward. This evening, to update the board, had to codify the actual request that went out via email, which I did receive all the documented copies back with three approvals from the election board. That, any questions or comments, I'll be more than happy to entertain.
Mr. Trombley, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time. As Mr. Gravon mentioned, the way these companies are doing to verify these claims with the adjusters and that, they've been trying to do everything virtually. And given the location of this equipment in the basement, we just cannot get a good signal to do that. We have taken pictures and basically supplied them everything they've asked for thus far, and we'll just continue to try and work through this claim and provide to come to a resolution. Thank you.
If there's no discussion, a motion will be in order.
I make a motion to confirm the email vote approving the HVAC system repairs in the amount of eighty thousand dollars that would be asked in that repair of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus any insurance adjustments.
I'll support that. I have a motion by Clerk Gurley, supported by the Chair. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Rosio?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
All right, moving down to item eleven, Public Commentary.
Good evening, Karen Turchi on Haven Ridge Road. Going back to the official salaries. I appreciate the research that is done with the comparisons, and that's what we always did with anything we do. You know, you know I'm involved here for a while. But I believe you should probably throw out, like Chesterfield, Harrison, McComb, because they are much bigger than we are. I would, you know, look at, like Ray, Armita, stuff like that for comparison. Basically, that's, you know, what you want to do. But I do disagree, we should not contract out for a third party. That'll just add, add expense, which could have gone towards the bases instead. So, thank you.
Good evening, Danny Esprayer from Thirty-Two Mile Road. I know this is going to go on deaf ears. This has been happening in this township for twenty-some years. The township is ran very poorly. You all, three, was elected in November. If your wage was so bad in November, why would you run? Why? I take what I'm given and work with it. If you want to pay yourself to all these big townships, put in your forty-hour weeks like everybody does. Don't compare to somebody that's working forty-hour week to a thirty-hour week. Just because the state of Michigan says thirty hours is full-time, it's not. Go through all the businesses and ask every one of them, what is the requirement to be full-time? I got seven employees, and they're full-time, it's forty hours a week. And not one of them is making the money that you guys want. And yet, they all get their GPA, whatever the increase for the year is. And they all go home happy. And that's why I can't figure out why, within six months, we need twenty percent raise increase, when you knew, when you got elected, a ran, what the job required and what the pay was. And now, the next thing on deaf ears in this township. In March, the people of township rudely told us Piper's Acts are not in compliance. You let them use their own people to prove they were in compliance. I don't have anyone who's been out there to look what they have done. Three weeks after you guys gave them the stamp approval, three weeks. I live next door. I can look right in that pit and see it, right from early, they pulled that hole, he sighed off, and dug it down. Exactly what they said they were going to do. I know come November, their permit renews, and I know again, we are talking to deaf ears in this township. It's time the township board works for the community.
Mr. Esprayer, your three minutes are on.
I don't care.
Sir, I'm not...
Mr. Esprayer. Mr. Gravon, work for the board.
That's not how this works. Mr. Esprayer, so...
Good evening, Rex Springerfield, White House. Resident of Worthing Road. We have a problem. The township has allowed this remote control or not airplanes, these soccer fields on Twenty-Six Mile Road, to continually operate as a business. They're renting their facilities out to wild parties, wild parties.
Wild parties.
I had called the Sheriff's Department the other night.
Me too.
Two weeks back, in regards to the noise. My house vibrates. I'm more than a half mile away, three-quarters of a mile away, through the woods, through that pipeline clearing.
My house too.
My walls vibrate.
I moved there to have peace and quiet, not to listen to some boombox.
The Sheriff's Department tells me that they have until eleven o'clock at night to make all the noise they want. I told them, no, you need to learn your job, and there's a new ordinance, but it's not getting enforced. They took them that midnight in particular, it took them an hour and a half to quiet it down.
It don't make any difference, they're still way over the decimals anyway. No matter if they're past the time limit or not, they're still way...
So they are running that park out to these parties. Someone's got to be a member, put a word in for it, the way they operate their park, their club. But that's a business, that's a commercial venue. They're making profit on our discomfort. I don't care, it's three in the afternoon, go ten o'clock at night.
Get out of the rest?
It doesn't fit the neighborhood.
I will set my truck with a stereo full blast. I might go down that big field?
I called at eleven-thirty on Saturday to the Sheriff three times. I sat my driveway until two AM, not a single person showed. I have a son with brain tumor and sensory processing disorder, not one person did a damn thing. But it gets better. This is seventy-four point seven decibels from a half a mile. The sleeping regulation for us data is twenty point two. This is seventy-four, three times the limit for sleeping. We're done. I'm the new resident, I moved in in June, I thought this was going to be my heaven, it's my hell. I came from Detroit, nightclubs all over the place, lower decibels than this. It's a shit show.
And if this park on Twenty-Six Mile Road was on the other end of Worthing Road, I'm sure it'd be taken care of.
Well, we want to shut down, we don't like...
They got, we got to do something, they quit running it out to these parties.
And this is from June eleventh till this weekend, every single weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And on Sunday, they start at eleven AM and go till nine PM. All the way, I'm talking full, you can't go outside and eat, you can't do anything, it's all day long. And you know what the Sheriff told me? He said, well, they're a different ethnicity, you got to get a hold of the owner. And the only good person in this is Jean and Carol, that's it. Everybody else is ignoring me. I spent over half a million dollars to live over here, this is crazy.
What are you guys going to do?
What can we do?
So this is public comment, it's not Q and A. I will very much address your issues at number twelve called from the board. If...
Okay.
It came on another weekend, we got to get sleep. I got a job though, and a son to take care of.
Hope come.
I would like to address the hope that before another raise increases discussed, and as part of the potential master plan that you're working on, that you come to another means of self-indulgence and determining raises. of self-indulgence and determining races. You could have a community board of volunteers that wouldn't cost anything. And furthermore, in November, when we elected to have two more trustees on the Board, it is very obvious to me why that is necessary, because we consistently vote three full-timers against the trustees. I'm really disappointed.
Laurel Eisen, South Forest. I just hope you guys feel like you've accomplished something with the pay rates, hope you feel good about yourselves, knowing that you've kind of cheated the system. You shouldn't, you three should not have been allowed to vote. Morally, that was a very poor move. You lost a lot of respect from the residents. I'm a Catholic school teacher, so I'll talk about morals. But I know that I make very little, like $37,000 a year. I made $500 for my cost of living raise for next year. And I work 50 to 60 hours a week during the school year, and I don't make overtime. So, I hope you feel good about yourselves. Also, my kids were promised a splash pad when we moved into Lennox Township in 2019. Still waiting for a splash pad. But they're almost in high school now, or, well, almost in middle school and it was almost in high school, so, guess we don't need it anymore. Thank you.
Jamie Boyd, Omore Road. I would just like to say that there were several people that spoke this evening that I would vote for to replace some of you. Thank you.
And this is my first time in the meeting, but I would like to know, for all the three that said, yay, for the insurance, would you pay your insurance before getting the bill? Like they said, I don't think that that's right. Are you guys working for the taxpayers for these raises? Who gets to say that you get those raises? Don't you think us taxpayers? Because you're working for us. We're not working for you, you're working for us in our community. That's all I got to say.
All right, moving on to number 12, call from the Board. For those regarding the soccer park, I urge you, please, go and talk to our Public Safety Director, Mr. White. Mr. White, can you please raise your hand, so they know who they want to talk to? He's our director, he pleases on with the Sheriff's Department. What they told you is completely unacceptable, they are under contract, they are well aware of the new ordinance, so please talk to him, he will get it fixed. And that's my two pieces. Any further comments from the Board? All right, moving on, I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:03 p.m. I have a motion by Supervisor Reader, seconded by Trustee Rosio, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Hearing nothing, motion passed, because we are adjourned.